The meeting of the Summerfield Planning Board for September 24th, 2025 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one, published to the Courier-News, two, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, three, posted to the municipal website, and four, given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare and Art Aitkins are both excused. Chris Addicks.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember of room.
Here.
Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I need an approval for minutes from September 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Was I here for this? I can't remember.
I may have, I may have the minutes wrong. You may not have been present. So I'm staying?
Sure.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes.
Say it for that one.
That's okay.
All right, and we have our resolution for Shanta LLC at 132 North Gaston.
So moved.
Second.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Okay, before we move on to our hearing, I just want to check with the public. Is anyone here from the public with Cornell Boulevard and the... Just want to, I'll give you the opportunity to come up, okay? If not, then we're going to close that. All right, so we're moving on to our hearing. Application for Somerville Estate LLC, 157 East Main Street, for a minor site plan approval.
Your, your microphone? Just hit the button. There you go.
There we go. Thanks so much. Appreciate that. Erica Edwards, land use and zoning lawyer here in New Jersey, here on behalf tonight of the property known as, the applicant known as Somerville Estate LLC. The property, the subject property is 157 East Main Street in the borough of Somerville. That is block 68, lot 17, in the ECBD E-B2 zoning district. We are here this evening for a series of, requesting a series of variances that are... I would direct your attention to the Board Planner's Review Letter for the most succinct list of the variances we are seeking. We have three witnesses with us tonight. We have two expert witnesses and a fact witness, namely the applicant. Our experts are Frank Farrell, as the project engineer with Grotto Engineering, and then we have Sam Bellamy with Dresner-Robin. He is our planning consultant out of Jersey City. And then we have Mr. Henry Patel, who is the primary representative of the applicant. If it would be okay with the Board, we would like to swear everyone at once. That is our normal protocol, so thank you, yes. So if I could ask the witnesses to step forward. Mr. Patel, would you do likewise?
Okay, do you swear the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I do.
Okay, thank you very much. And then when they come up, they can give their name and qualify them.
They're good.
And just before we start, we're going to mark as Exhibit A1, on behalf of the applicant, the application and supporting documentation. A2 will be your notice and proof of publication. And PB1 will be Mr. Cole's review letter dated July 2nd, 2025.
Very good. Thank you very much. We're going to start with Mr. Farrell, our project engineer, please. Mr. Farrell, I'll qualify you once you get situated there. Mr. Farrell, would you provide your educational and professional credentials for the Board, please?
Certainly. My name is Frank Farrell. I graduated from Rowan University in 2009 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I've been working at Grotto Engineering since that time. I've been licensed in 2014, and I've appeared before numerous boards across the state of New Jersey. Most recently, I was in New Brunswick on September 8th in front of their planning board. My license is current and in good standing.
Very good.
In engineering. Yes, I was. Thank you.
Okay, we offer Mr. Farrell as a, as a, an expert in the field of civil engineering. His qualifications are accepted. Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Farrell, would you provide an overview of the site, please?
The plans I'm referring to are the same plans that were submitted as part of the application. Does that fall under A1, or unless you'd like me to number it?
Unless this is any different than what was submitted before, if this is A1, you can reference the plan pages.
Sure. So I'm actually going to skip page one. It's not all that interesting. So we'll go right to the existing condition and site plan sheet. And if it's a preference, I'll sit. I think we can, I can do this right here. And normally preparing an outline for these presentations, but as Erica pointed out, Mr. Cole has done a very nice job of identifying all the issues. And so I'm mostly going to use his report as an outline, and we can sort of walk through that step by step. But a brief introduction first. The site is at the intersection of Route 28 and Park Avenue. It is identified as 157 East Main Street. The East Main Street is also New Jersey State Route 28. The site has two driveways, one on the bottom or south side of the property, and one on the northeast side of the property. It's roughly trapezoidal or triangular in shape. A slightly odd-shaped lot. However, it does meet most, it meets a lot of the lot criteria. It's 16,542 square feet, or .38 acres. And now I can begin mostly going through Mr. Cole's review and giving you the various conformities or existing deviations from the variance, because there isn't any site work proposed. So any of the variances that we're seeking today are existing conditions that we would hope to receive variance granted for. So the minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. The proposed existing is 16,542, which complies. The frontage minimum requirement is 75, but as it's on two frontages here, there's 338 feet of total frontage. The lot width minimum is 75 feet. Either way, you measure it from Park Avenue or from East Main Street, you greatly exceed that 75 feet, about 186 or 151 relative to Park Avenue or East Main Street respectively. The minimum lot depth is 125 feet, whereas the lot is 145 feet in depth. The maximum improvement coverage is 95%, and clearly we're less than 95%. There's some green space out at the corner of Park Avenue and East Main Street. The maximum building height is two stories or 30 feet, and we're clearly at one story and approximately 21 feet. There's no FAR requirement. The maximum building coverage is 20%, where we're 10.6%, which are all compliant. Now we move on to some of the other standards in the ECBD redevelopment zone. The minimum front yard is zero, where, and the maximum front yard is 10. The building exists on the site today at a depth of 42.4 feet or 41.5 relative to Park Avenue and East Main Street respectively. And just to back up a second, the application here today is for the addition of a kitchen to allow the service of hot food and deli food in the, in the building. It's a convenience store, and it's going to remain a convenience store with the addition of the food, the food service. So the reason for the application today is just that, adding the kitchen. That's all we're doing. No site improvements are necessary. Should be pretty straightforward. But moving on. The minimum rear yard is 25 feet, and it measures approximately 40 feet. The minimum side yard is 12 feet, whereas the rear yard here relative to the church property, which is planned left or west of the site, is 5.5 feet, which is a variance. There's a number of street trees that are required. Street trees on this site are kind of unique. We're at an intersection which complicates it, and there's also a requirement, which I'll get to in a minute, that the site have 15 feet of sidewalk between the curb and, and what would be the face of the building. Clearly, the ordinance, the ECBD zone considers a different configuration of this, of this property. But nonetheless, there's one street tree that's out there today, and we would intend for that to remain. The remaining, I believe it's six trees, we would request a waiver for, and subsequently, there would be a payment made to the, I believe it's the Environmental Commission, as would be appropriate. We are compliant with the minimum number of off-street parking spaces. Seven are required based on the square footage of the, of the site, or the square footage of the convenience store. Fifteen spaces exist and will remain. The potential, I won't say exception to that, is we're going to reevaluate and take a look at that ADA stall subsequent to what we hope would be an approval by this Board to make sure that it's compliant with the current standards for ADA parking. That, that may include a slight modification to the sidewalk adjacent to the building, but that's just to make sure that everything is up to the current standard in regard to accessibility. The parking location is prohibited in the front yard. Again, going back to the standard, which clearly suggests a building should be between zero and 10 feet in the front yard. The parking would be behind. The site exists on a corner, and the parking, again, is existing and is going to remain in its current configuration in both front yards, both relative to Park Avenue and to East Main Street. We have a loading space. One is required. One is there, so we're good. We have fencing and the percent of the, both height and how much of it is solid. The requirement or the allowable fencing is four feet in a front yard with a maximum solid percentage of 60%. The entire, the property line is generally surrounded on the two non-street frontages by six feet, six-foot tall fence that is not, that is completely opaque. It's completely see-through. Those are mostly what we would probably consider side or rear yards relative to those other properties, so we believe that that's an appropriate screening measure relative to those, to those. So we'd like that fencing to remain. Driveway location, greater than 10 feet from a property line. We comply, because we're 18 or 19 feet, depending on which property line you would orient yourself to. We also comply with the driveway location. The requirement is that we are greater than 50 feet from an intersection, and we are greater than 50 feet from the intersection of Park Avenue and from East Main Street. The driveway width is compliant, 24 feet or 20 feet are proposed, where they're required to be between 20 and 35. I mentioned sidewalk width is a variance that we're seeking relief from. The requirement is 15 feet. There's really no more room for sidewalk. The curb is there, the property line is where the property line is, and the sidewalk occupies the entirety of the space between the curb line and the property line. And as a result, there's really no more room for more sidewalk. We believe that the 10 feet that's there is adequate and would request that a variance be granted for that condition. Duration of illumination. This wasn't stated in the application, but I can tell you now that the, the lighting is either manually operated relative to the light immediately inside and surrounding the building. But the remaining site lighting is on a timer. And the intention is to provide lighting that is in compliance with the lighting ordinance, which we believe that it is. And that goes to the timing of the lighting as well, which indicates that it should be off, I believe, after certain hours, and that is the intention, except for the minimum lighting that's required to maintain a safe site. So note one in Mr. Cole's report was that we should revise the cover sheet of the site plan to match the table that he provided, which is mostly why I skipped going through my own cover sheet. We would be, we would be happy to do so. I don't know that I'm going to need to go over every comment in this report, but I'll certainly do my best to go over the ones that, that require additional attention to discussion. The driveway apron has cracks or is disrepair. The applicant is, is prepared to comply with the statement here that we repair or replace the driveway apron. The, there's a couple areas where the sidewalk is lifted based on nearby trees, and those will be remedied as well. We intend to provide repaired sidewalk that would be compliant with the accessibility standards for sidewalk. The other one is the dumpster. So there's a dumpster on the northern corner of the property. There's an enclosure where the garbage is held. And then there's also, there is a dumpster out there today for recycling that's not inside that enclosure. Our intention is to do one of two things. To provide a slightly expanded enclosure such that we can get that second recycling container inside the, the refuse area. Or, and/or, change the timing and the dumpster configuration that's already inside that area. So our intention is to have twice-a-week garbage pickup. Right now, it's once a week, and it's more than adequate for the site with the addition of food waste that may come from a deli. We're anticipating an increased need for garbage pickup. And that's both based on volume and, and to maintain a non-odorous condition on the site. So garbage will be picked up twice a week by private hauler. And we would, we would hope that we could work with your professionals to provide a dumpster enclosure that's adequate and appropriately screened. There's an existing enclosure there now, and we could, we could add to it. We could expand to it and occupy or use some of that loading space. We could reel the dumpster out into the loading area where it could be accessed by a truck, and that's our intention. There's a comment about number four is related to the ADA stall, where we'll be updating the ADA compliant signage and at the same time, look at the striping, the size of the stall, the slope, et cetera, to make sure that the accessibility requirements are all met. Comment five is, the applicant should provide testimony regarding the small 10-foot right-of-way along the northern property line. I don't have any information related to that, and I'm, I'm not sure that we, as a group, have anything to say about it, but I can tell you that we're not making any changes to the site, so there really isn't anything that would be impacted by this application relative to that existing easement along the northern property line. We can only guess as to why it's there, I believe. Testimonies to regarding the types of vehicles. It's mostly box trucks making deliveries. There's no tractor-trailers that are entering the property. The site is operated for some time, and it has, for as long as anybody can remember, I think, has been a convenience store. And it would continue to operate in the manner in which it does. They don't have any issues with deliveries, so that loading space, we believe, is adequate. Going into Section B1, there is, there are two catch basins located on the property. I'm going to gesture to them in case we can't see them. So there's two here. And then there's a pipe that extends northward. The survey doesn't show where that pipe exits, but I believe that there's an inlet on Park Avenue that's just beyond the limit of the survey here on the plan. And it seems logical that that's the discharge location for that pipe. It's an eight-inch pipe, and based on my, my estimated drainage area and the size of that pipe, again, we don't know exactly what the slope of that pipe is, which plays into the, the capacity characteristics of it, but we believe that this is adequate for a 10-year storm. And in discussing this with the applicant, they haven't noticed any nuisance ponding or stormwater issues on the property. Those, those are not constantly underwater. There's no ponding there on a regular basis. I believe those inlets are probably going to get cleaned as they get in there to do some other internal improvements. But we believe that there's no real improvement necessary beyond the maintenance, I guess, of that existing stormwater management feature on the site. I believe I covered lighting. The, the intention is to provide lighting that is compliant with the borough's ordinance for lighting between, whether it be site lighting or the perimeter lighting that's on the poles. We can measure that with a light meter and provide confirmation of that effect if the Board, if that would satisfy the Board, should they choose to act favorably on the application.
So you can amend the plan to show spot, spot foot candles?
Sure. We, we could certainly take a light meter or have an electrician have a light meter. We could, we could measure on a couple different locations and then indicate what that lighting level is at the property line. And certainly, that would be relevant if there were more... It would be even more relevant if there were more residential uses around the site, but there's a park on the northeast side. There's a church on the west, and then there's various commercial uses in and around the site. But we can, we can provide more information to that effect, and that would be sufficient. I mentioned lights are either manually operated as they're near to the building or on a timer. Site landscaping.
Can you just, one of the things was to address the store hours. Can you address that?
Yes. My store hours, my notes indicate, we are 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the store, with the exception that the kitchen portion will likely close at approximately 6:00 PM. That's based on the demand, perceived demand. There's, there's really not a lot of demand for dinner, but there's a, there's a demand for the lunch hour and probably, probably for the morning as well. But we anticipate the kitchen closing at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
And the site closing at 9:00 PM.
Thank you.
I mentioned the deficient trees. The intention is to provide the financial contribution as is required for the trees not planted on the site. And again, there's really not a lot of opportunity to plant them in the already slightly narrow 10-foot sidewalk area where we need 15. Should landscaping be planted, we can include the note on the plan that would, that would indicate any plantings would be required as shown in comment three. I mentioned, I think I covered solid waste and cooking oil. So having discussed this with the applicant, the, there's a cooking oil drum inside the kitchen area, which will be, which is where the oil will be stored, and then it'll be picked up as necessary from a disposal service. So there's no intention of storing cooking oil outside or having it anywhere else that's going to be in the kitchen, except when it's getting picked up and taken away. And I believe, it might be more of an architectural comment, but sound and, and at the perimeter of the site, I recall being one of the, one of the issues, or potential for an issue. I know that the, with the kitchen closing at 6:00 PM and the fan associated with the kitchen being one of the primary drivers of the conversation related to the acoustic effect, fans off when the kitchen's off. So when the kitchen's done at 6 o'clock, that fan's off, so we're not talking about noise out into the, into the early evening even on the site. I'm going to skip the architectural comments, because that's not what I'm qualified to discuss.
Don't let that stop you.
Respectfully, I am going to let it stop you. Yeah, yeah, I'm going to skip the planning ones for the most part, too. So floodplain. So the site isn't loaded as located within a floodplain. There's nothing that we're doing on the site that would be a regulated activity under the DEP's Flood Hazard Area Control Act rule. There is, however, a requirement for local building code that any new utilities and outlets and whatnot be located above the flood elevation, and certainly, the applicant would be compliant with local building code. And in a similar, in a similar nature, actually, related to the flood, there's a requirement that there be no floatable material located on the site, so those dumpsters are in an enclosure. And it's not just a little fence. It's in an enclosure, and they would be restricted from, from floating and migrating to some other site should the floodwaters enter upon the property. We should be, we should be all right there. We don't intend there to be any new sanitary or other utility connections. The requirement related to a connection fee is, I'm not entirely familiar if that would get triggered under a building, under the building application, but we don't have any reason to make a new connection at the moment.
Yeah, just the SRVSA wants to see it. Any land use application.
Okay.
The sewer authority wants to see it to sign off.
Noted. Okay, so that would, I assume it would be a condition of approval should the Board act favorably?
Just making sure they get a copy, and they say there is no fee associated with this.
Okay.
Should the Board approve during compliance, we handle that. That's not our policy. That's the SRVSA's. We changed their policy about two, three years ago, saying they want to see all land use applications.
Okay. We can certainly comply with that and provide them with a copy of the application documents to determine whether they have, I guess, jurisdiction and/or whether a fee would be required. Okay. No issue adding notes, as, as mentioned. There is a classification exemption area, contaminated soil potentially on the site. There's, I believe there's still monitoring well out there, and the applicant's aware of it. That doesn't restrict the use of the site. There's no airborne contaminants. There's just the prior, I imagine it would be a prior owner, actually, the entity who's doing that, I'm not entirely sure. But there's somebody that comes periodically to check on the groundwater and monitor it. Doesn't have any impact on the site op, operation or, or use. There's no outdoor dining proposed. There's no outdoor tables or chairs and whatnot. It's going to be kind of grab-and-go. It might be, you know, order-out, Uber-Eats kind of stuff, but there's no intention for people to be dining in or at this facility as a restaurant. Excuse me. Store hours did that one. And if there's any missing, similar to the sidewalk, if there's any missing granite block curbing or, or similar site features that are required along the street's frontage, applicants indicated that they're willing to make those repairs, as would be necessary. So I think that I've covered all the things that I'm allowed to cover. And Mr. Cole's, he's got a couple extra initials that I don't have. So I believe that completes my, I believe that completes my testimony. I'm happy to field any questions.
I just want to ask, if I missed it, I apologize. Did we cover the hours for pickup? We normally restrict them, nothing before 7:00 AM and nothing after 9:00 PM. So that would be for your
Pick up trash?
Recycling, solid waste, anything like that, yes.
Okay. It's, it again, it's the applicants tend to do everything that would be required to be in, in compliance with the ordinances that govern the use of the site. So I'm sure that they'll, off-peak hour, to make sure that it's not conflicting with, you know, general traffic in the area or the operation of the site, and then also compliant with the requirement that it be not after 9:00 PM or before 7:00 PM.
Same thing with loading deliveries.
Yeah.
So my only comment that I have.
Well, the only comment I have is regarding site lighting.
Okay.
And I would just, and I know you're going to address it, but I would just ask you to take a, a good look at it. I pass by there at about 5:00, 5:30 every morning. And the wall units are angled towards the road. So it's, you're getting a lot of direct light going into the road as people are driving
Okay.
westbound.
Okay. We can probably add
Angle them down.
Shields or adjust the, adjust the angle of those. Okay, noted.
And the street lighting, it's so much street lighting around there. You might find during, when it's not being used, that you have adequate security lighting just from the street lighting, but
Yeah, being at an intersection.
Right, you have the tech lights on East Main and on Park. You have lighting there that obviously it's, we need visibility, of course. But you might find that you might be able to turn all the lights off and have adequate spillage.
Save us on an electricity bill.
Right.
Great.
Just two quick questions. You mentioned the kitchen is going to close at 6:00 and the store at 9:00. The kitchen will open at 6:00 AM also, like the store?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when you were preparing the plans, do you happen to have a copy of the right-of-way easement that you could provide the Board?
I don't. When I prepared the plan, it was based on the survey that was provided, and the survey noted it, but I didn't have a copy of the actual document that would have suggested why the surveyor would have added it to the, to the plan either.
Does it have a meets and bounds? I, I'm sorry, a deed book, a page number on it, on the plan or the survey, by chance? I'm just wondering. We might just want to get a copy of that, just so we could see and make sure there's no issue.
It's, it may be slightly more complicated than that, because the survey indicates that it's based on a tax map. So it says a 10-foot private right-of-way parentheses tax map. So that means that it's shown on a tax map.
Yeah.
But why it's shown on the tax map, tax maps don't always really provide a lot of supporting documentation as to why the lines that are on there are on there.
It may be a little more complicated.
Yeah, I would just like to see some best efforts. If it's not being used and there's no need for it, I would love to see a discharge so we, in the future.
Clear up the title for the property.
It would be, it's what
We could work to see what we can find and what, if anything, is there.
Right.
Yeah.
Could that, that access be for the drain pipe that you were talking about? That's a couple of properties down? Because this used to be a gas station.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why you have all the testing and stuff? But maybe that was some sort of access to
The trench drain is off of, the trench drain is, Larry, is off of Park Avenue, out near the roads. This easement goes up against the church.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm looking at.
It's just a question.
I just didn't know if it was an access to a drain pipe or something.
Right. I mean, if we get the Yeah.
Usually a right-of-way
If we can get the deed book and actually read it, it would shed a lot of light on this.
If it's there, if we can't find it, we can't find it.
I can only guess, and, and I try not to.
We'll see what we can find.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the Board before we move on?
Okay, thank you.
I can bring to the Board's attention that, in fact, we have a third
Can you just make sure your microphone's on?
I had shut it off.
There you go, thank you.
Want to bring to the Board's attention that, in fact, we have a third expert witness that I did not identify in the initial, my opening comments. I'd like to call our architect up, please, to have him sworn, and then we'll qualify him, and he will be the next to testify.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If you could raise your hand, just swear the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, good.
Thank you.
Alex, would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Alexis Avasaja. A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R.
Alexis Avasaja, A.L.E.X.A.N.D.E.R. Last name is Z as in zebra, A, B as in boy, A, S as in Sam, A, J.J.A.
Good, thank you. And would you please provide your educational and professional credentials on the record for the board, please?
Okay, I have a bachelor's degree from University of Minnesota, licensed architect in New Jersey and New York. I've been practicing architecture for quite a few years licensed, do a lot of projects in New York, done a lot of testimony mainly in New Brunswick and other places like in Atlantic City.
Okay, and your license is current and good, good standing in New Jersey?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. And I'm sorry if I missed it, have you been qualified as an expert in the field of architecture before these boards?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We offer him as an expert.
He is accepted, thank you.
Thank you.
So, basically, basically as you can see, the amount, the changes interior.
Sir, if you could use the microphone just so that the audience can hear, yeah, either one.
Okay, okay, so the changes on the interior of the deli are limited to installation of a six-foot hood. The entire existing exterior and the interior of the deli are going to remain the same. I know, I saw in the architectural comments, there's a commentary referencing the exterior signage and the owner is going to testify that that is going to be removed, all, all the signs on the glass. Outside of that, everything else is going to stay exactly the same.
Alex, are you able to address the comments specifically in Mr. Cole's letter?
The architectural comments?
Please.
Okay, so basically, so the comment is exterior modifications to the building other than the installation of rooftop HVAC equipment is not proposed. It's the understanding that a few years ago, there was renovation to the exterior wall and there was a sign that was mounted and approved by the borough zoning officer. And as stated, the storefront glass is covered with advertising material that does not comply with the borough ordinance and the owner is going to stipulate that this is going to be removed.
Okay.
As far as the existing and proposed signage, if any site signage including the existing advertising located on the building facade and plate glass, again, that's all going to be removed and the only signage will be, only that approved by the board.
Okay. Okay. Would you like to cover the additional comments or do you feel you've already done that?
I think I've already done that.
Okay. We offer Alex for any comments or questions that the board has.
Question, comments from the architect? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, the only comment I had is just best efforts, the A.C. compressors which are up against the church, the property towards the west are lower than the flood hazard elevation. It would just behoove everyone to raise those should they get changed out or people are motivated. The question is, if you get a, if you get a flood, which we all know it floods, those A.C. compressors are underwater. So, it'd be nice if you have the whole wall to raise them to above the flood hazard elevation.
Which should be easily done.
It, they're right there.
Right.
It's just if you, so they're on wood platforms, just to put an L bracket and mount it on the main stream wall higher, two more feet, I think it said six and a half feet, would raise them so that you wouldn't have potential damage to the A.C. compressors if there was a flood.
See no problem with that at all.
Just one, one comment and it may sound minimal, but what about trash cans, public trash cans in that, you know, you're now having food to go. I don't know how many trash cans are on the site. I think there's just one out front. You now have people walking to and fro with, you know, they get a Taylor ham, egg and cheese and the wrapper kinda goes somewhere and you've got a.
Pork roulmer, sorry.
Yeah, it's Taylor ham. How do, how do you anticipate handling that, you know, at, at the driveway entrances and exits?
I think I'm going to defer to the owner and let him answer that.
Okay. Would you like him to do that now or come up at the end after the expert testimony?
Or you can come up now, it's fine.
Okay, very good. Henry? Okay.
Good evening, I'm the owner, Henry Patel. For your comment, I think right now we really don't have a garbage issue outside the parking lot, but if we happen to have it, we would add additional garbage can to the right side of the property, but we would make a lot of effort to take out trash maybe every two hours, so make sure that the trash is always empty. Right now, we're doing it twice a day, but we'd probably end up doing it maybe six times a day. We would have my employee go out as a part of the checklist as far as their job credentials to go out and clean the parking lot right now, would say keep, take out the trash, but I assure you guys, there won't be any trash at the, I wouldn't wanna go to place and eat some that's trash. I'd expect the same for folks coming to my place.
So, you're not proposing any additional garbage cans?
I would do it, but I think right now is adequate. We have other sites that I own. I feel like the more trash cans you add, it, it just gives tacky look and it gives a more, people coming out of the car, put more trash into the, into the existing trash, but.
That's kinda the point.
Huh?
That's kinda the point.
Yeah, but we would do it.
But you don't want, you don't want their trash and your trash, that's.
It just makes it real dirty, then it just.
I, I understand what you're saying.
But I would do it, I would do it, adding a trash can would not be a, it would be a zero issue.
I, I think, I, I, my, my sense would be more towards the park side, on the park avenue side.
Right.
Because you get a lot of pedestrian activity of, you know, kids coming across the street for their ice creams and Taylor ham, egg and cheese and.
Yeah, we would do it, though, we would do it. We, I assure you all that the site's gonna stay clean and fresh.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big issue, but it's just, it's an issue.
Yeah, we would do it, we would do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Patel, this might be a good time to address directly the, the issue of the advertising material on the front glass?
Yeah, so, hi, the site's been closed for four years before I took over last year. It was pretty dump garbage, so we came in and you guys approved the, the new look. What was happening is customers in the area just for four years was closed, so they didn't realize that we're open. It took us a while, you know, from us going day one, five customers the whole day, to now getting about close to three hundred customers a day. And reason we put that advertisement, because the sun hits so hard and it damages our merchandise inside. So, I, I told my team we would take it out. We really don't need any advertisement now like we did last year and I used to tell Ryan all the time that we had no customers at all because the place was just closed and people didn't realize we were open. Now it's not the case. And now is actually, people appreciate us and they really are looking forward to us opening up a breakfast program. And we would take out the signage, it wouldn't be a problem. And as far as the heat's coming, we'll figure out with my team and you guys to see if I can put some sort of material, clear material, so it prevents the heat coming inside the store.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Henry, appreciate it. Sam? Okay. Sam, would you provide your educational and professional, professional credentials for the board, please?
Sure, my full name's Samuel Bellamy, last name B.E.L.L.A.M.Y. I'm a licensed professional planner with the firm Dress Network Robin. My license is current and in good standing in the state of New Jersey, also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University and I testify frequently in it, accepted as an expert witness in planning before multiple boards throughout New Jersey.
Offer Mr. Bellamy as an expert in, in the field of planning. He is accepted, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Farrell really did a good job of covering a lot of the, the variance relief that we're seeking. I'm just gonna recap and summarize that and provide some additional details as far as the statutory justification for those, that deviation relief. So, we are located in the EB-two district of the Eastern Central Business Redevelopment Plan, the E.C.D., D.P. So, this, this redevelopment plan does do a good job of both outlining a long-term vision for this area as well as allowing for adequate improvements to existing uses within, within the plan, so that's exactly what we're doing here. It's a permitted convenience store that's been operating on the site and historically on the site that we're seeking to add a kitchen with a fryer, griddle, hood to provide for a deli and, and hot food takeout. So, those are permitted uses within the redevelopment plan, both the convenience store that's operating now as well as the, the deli takeout service that we're proposing with the, with the added kitchen here. So, we are seeking that approval of the, of the additional use of this property as well as for improvements related to the non-conformant conditions. As Mr. Farrell testified to, we're not proposing any changes to either the, the building itself, any bulk changes or the layout of the site, the parking operations will operate as they currently do, but there are a number of existing non-conformities that we wanted to address and, and get clarified for the record. So, the existing building does have maximum front yard setback, variance relief, forty-two point four feet from Park Avenue, forty-one point five, five feet from East Main Street and that's where a maximum ten feet is permitted. The building is oriented along the west side property line. It's about five and a half feet off of that property line, so where, where twelve feet's required. So, given that orientation, kinda the irregular nature of the, the site where you have the parking surrounding it with the two curb cuts, that does require relief. Adjacent to this property is a, is a church property. That church building runs almost entirely and, and deeper than our building does with about a seven-foot setback, so really the location of the building as it exists, I don't think has any impact on light air and open space on adjacent properties. As far as the parking location, so we have parking in the front yard along both frontages, front yard parking's not permitted. We do have a landscaping buffer between the sidewalk and that parking area, so I think that does provide a little bit of a buffer area and separation between pedestrians walking on the sidewalk and, and vehicles. So, I think from a safety aspect and from a visual aspect, that the existing landscaping on the site does a good job of providing some screening and buffering. As Mr. Farrell said, we, we also have a sidewalk with deviation that we're asking for. It's ten feet existing along East Main Street where fifteen feet is required. I did have a chance to visit the site prior to my testimony tonight. I think there is adequate space for pedestrian circulation around the site and really the, the sidewalk actually tapers down as you go further west along East Main Street, so increasing the, the sidewalk width would really just provide at this point a sidewalk to, to nowhere essentially. So, I think given the existing conditions of the site, I think the sidewalk width is adequate and can be granted by this board. There are two waivers that we're seeking. I, I think one waiver now, we agreed to the site illumination to meet, we're gonna study that and, and meet the, the ordinance requirements. So, now we're down to the street tree requirement. As Mr. Farrell testified to, we are gonna do the payment and lose, so I think that addresses the, the street tree deficiency where seven's required and one exists. And we also do have four existing pretty mature trees on the site itself, so I think, again, that, that kinda provides for that shade tree aspect that the, the plan does envision. I think this variance relief, there's certainly elements of a hardship here given the existing building layout and, and site circulation, really to comply with what the redevelopment plan calls for would require complete demolition and reconfiguration. Again, I think this redevelopment plan allows for continuation of existing uses, which we're trying to do. And I also think all the benefits and overall project outweigh any detriment with those existing conditions and deviation relief we're seeking. Overall, this project does advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. Again, this is a permitted use, the added deli and hot food takeout with the convenience store and is an appropriate use and development of the site and will promote the general welfare. I also find that this, the building and the site itself does provide sufficient space and appropriate location for this use and that's consistent with purpose G of the municipal land use law. Moving into the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the, to the general welfare here. I think we agreed to many of the, the conditions to bring the site as far as, and, and as in closer conformity as far as sight lighting, landscaping, ADA compliance, raising the HVAC equipments. I think we are making a lot of improvements as far as, as far as those design standards go. I likewise don't see any substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again, I think we're directly in line with what this redevelopment plan envisions and appropriate improvements to existing uses and overall we are consistent with the redevelopment plan objectives, which in line is also consistent with the, the general master plan and land use plan of the borough. So, just to summarize, I, I think this project does meet both the positive and negative criteria. I think that concludes my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Questions from the board? Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I think that concludes our testimony for this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions of any of our witnesses at this point if the board has any remaining questions.
Any remaining questions for the board right now?
I just have a couple, just, I think one is, I had mentioned that some of the pavers have settled, so I think the testimony was that they would be reset, they would eliminate the tripping hazards, is that, just for clarification, that's all.
Yes.
Thank you. That answers it. And to clarify the dumpster, you're proposing either to enlarge the dumpster to accommodate, the dumpster enclosure, I'm sorry, enlarging it to, so the two dumpsters can be in there or increase the frequency so the existing dumpster will be sufficient for everything moving it out, is that the two options?
It's one or the other or both. It may be, it may be a combination. The existing dumpster that's there is dumpsters garbage and then the second one that's outside the enclosure at the moment is recycling. So, the applicant is weighing with the, with the refuse pickup, the hauler, what the options are, whether they can get two smaller dumpsters or if they need one dumpster still and, and potentially expand in the enclosure. If they needed to expand the enclosure, we would be working with the board and your professionals to provide a, an acceptable enclosure and screening for that. We're not exactly sure what that solution is, now we're still working that out with the, with the hauler.
Yeah, if the dumpster's gonna be expanded, I don't think there's impact protection on the inside from, from the trucks, so.
If, if we're gonna, yeah, so if we're gonna expand the dumpster.
Right.
Itself, we would probably be lengthening it toward Park Avenue and then reconfigure the opening so that they would open into the loading space and then the hauler would come onto the property, pull the dumpster, wheel the dumpster out of the enclosure, have the truck pick it up, put it back, wheel it back into the enclosure. That would be the intention if we're gonna expand it.
Yeah, I'm just mentioning or throwing out the idea of impact, we typically put, our new dumpsters enclosures, we typically do four-inch concrete-filled bollards just to protect it from.
Sure.
When the, when the truck's picking them up and slamming.
Truck's not real delicate.
So, I'm just, I, I have, I understand what you're saying and it makes sense, I'm just bringing out to you this, I'd like to see if the board feels that way, some impact protection to keep the structure intact.
I don't, I think a couple of bollards are very acceptable.
Thank you.
I think there's actually two there now, so if we have to add another couple, it wouldn't be an issue. Yeah, there's two on the, there's two on the front face so that if a truck is pulling up to the dumpster enclosure, which right now faces out toward Park Avenue, there are those bollards there for, for impact protection.
Typically, they're in the inside, but we all know we're talking to them, it's good.
Anything else from the board? I just had one thing for clarification and again, I apologize if I missed it, the screening for probably, possibly, possible screening for on top of the roof for the hood, did we address whether that was going to be needed or not?
I, I know the answer to the question.
For the exhaust.
Let the architect.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alex, can you speak to that?
Well, typically, you have the, the exhaust fan on top of the duct with the mushroom, as it were, but again, if there's any need to screen that, that is again, very easily done, you know, so that they wouldn't. You know, so that there would be no issue with that.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a public view, you're okay with putting some lattice up?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to keep it out of public?
Absolutely, yeah. And using, using a color that kind of disappears, you know?
Right.
Yes, thank you for clarifying, thank you. Anything else from the board? All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public for comment on this application. And questions, sorry. Hearing none, a closed public session. Kara, can you recap where we're at?
Yes, so the relief requested-
Can you turn your microphone?
Sorry. Um, relief requested would be as outlined in Mike's report, which has been marked as PB one. Uh, based upon the testimony, I'll just put certain conditions, uh, into the record. Obviously, our standard conditions, escrow, compliance with any and all other approvals that may be necessary, and also compliance with Mike's report, except as maybe otherwise, uh, outlined during testimony. Um, the applicant indicated they would use their best efforts to locate the easement or information regarding that right-of-way. Um, and then if possible, if we're able to locate information to, uh, file a discharge, I'd be happy to work with the applicant and the applicant's counsel, uh, to see if we can get to that point. Uh, but we understand it may not exist, so.
Okay.
No, all pickups, loadings, deliveries, uh, will not be before seven AM or after nine PM. Uh, we're going to shield the wall, uh, light units, uh, as requested by the mayor to, uh, decrease any impact on, uh, passing by cars. Um, payment will be made to the environmental commission for the six street trees that they're deficient at a cost of-
Six fifty a tree.
Six fifty a tree. Uh, ch-ch-ch, plan will be amended to show light meter photometric data, um, and adjusted as necessary to comply with the ordinance, the satisfaction of board engineer planner. Um, hours of operation, uh, are agreed to be six AM to nine PM for the store, six PM for the kitchen. No storage of cooking oil outside, except prior to pickup. Um, all general comments within Mike's report will be complied with, uh, including that a request will be made of the SRVSA to, uh, provide a no-impact letter with regard to, or no fee, um, letter with regard to the application. Um, the applicant has indicated there will be no outdoor dining, so no need to amend the plans to provide for that. Uh, the exterior will, exterior will remain unchanged, but all signs on the glass will be removed, and only the board-approved signage will be installed. Uh, the dumpsters, uh, dumpster enclosure will be expanded as necessary to accommodate more dumpsters, and will be screened, and, uh, additional bollards will be placed as necessary, um, or the frequency of pickups will be increased. Uh, the applicant is weighing both of those options. Um, the HVAC will be raised above the flood elevation. A public trash can will be placed along the Park Avenue side of the property. And the hood on the roof will be screened from pub, if it is in public view, to the satisfaction of the board engineer and planner.
Thank you. Need a motion?
So moved with all of that.
Chris Addicks?
Yes.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember of room?
Yes.
Chairperson Warner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your consideration.
Congratulations.
Thank you for reinvesting in your business and in Somerville. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our open business and discussion items. First on, uh, floor area ratio, just an update from mayor and our liaison on, I think it's still at-
Yeah, it was introduced, uh, I don't know if it's on for this coming meeting, or if it's the following, uh, for adoption, so, but it was introduced.
Was introduced, all right, perfect, thank you so much.
And that's going from, I believe it was twenty-five to thirty?
Yes, twenty-five to thirty. Uh, zoning for the B-five Route twenty-two, this was where council asked us to review the area and the zones specifically to review allowable uses and adjust as needed. Um, Mike, have we, what do you have on the status update for that on this?
I thought we were, uh, I thought the council was already in front of council for educational facilities in the B-five.
Yeah, I believe that one may have been introduced as well.
Still already introduced?
I believe so.
All right. I like checking things off our box, so I'm good with that.
Well, I wouldn't take it off until we're, it's adopted.
But we don't have any action to take right now. All right. Uh, redevelopment plans, West End redevelopment, um, this is it, we're waiting for the public noticing to be finished on this, no need to continue to discuss. And once that meeting date for public, uh, comment and public hearing is set, it will be noticed appropriately. Uh, East End redevelopment plan, you're complete, you're currently working on that one, correct?
Yeah, I received an email from that, uh, I haven't drilled down on that, that's tomorrow.
Okay.
Momentarily to get that moving.
Yep. Uh, master plan update and review, uh, so as of today, all of the sections have been sent to their relevant committees. Um, and with the deadline of November first, um, this is just for public record, this is our initial review only. We are not at a point of looking for a public, uh, hearing or anything, we're not there yet. This is our internal review, but that will be forthcoming, and that will be noticed appropriately as well. Any comments? Larry? You had asked specifically, I thought, did you want to have a comment on this? You're okay with this?
Uh, uh, we had questions about the stormwater and the tree.
Okay.
And people from the environmental commission are here to present a basic overview, and that's it. Not a big discussion, but just an introduction and handing over a lot of paperwork.
But nothing on the master plan update right now?
Not at this point, no, we don't, we don't have anything from environmental yet. We still have to go through it and then present.
All right.
That's why we asked for November.
Okay. Stormwater ordinance, um, for everybody's reference, this has been referenced, uh, referred back to the planning board by the council for review to ensure that we're meeting all the new, uh, NJDEP requirements. This is not going to be discussed tonight in its entirety, the board has not had any opportunity to see anything, we just received the documents. Uh, this item will be open for discussion at a future planning board meeting, and will be noticed on a meeting agenda.
However, we have people here who want to have a little discussion and submit some reports that we're gonna ask for from the enviro- commi- environmental commission. It's coming to the planning board, and we're gonna say, hmm, what does the environmental commission think? We have a report that's ready to go, we can look at it, nothing has to be adopted, it's just gonna be here for us to use it for a reference point. We've worked hard at it, it's gonna be five minutes of time.
Uh, it, there's an appropriate time, it's not to discount them from coming out? There is an appropriate time for them to come? There is no, it says right on the agenda, there's no discussion, so-
No, it's not gonna be a full discussion, not in entirety, but let them give five minutes of talk, and then we're done.
This item will be open for discussion at a future planning board meeting. We've, we've noticed the public that there isn't discussion tonight.
Well-
So now we have to give the public the, and this, this is the reason for this expanded agenda, so let me, hear me out. There, there is a time and a place for it, and absolutely, this is, and we said, this is the time, th- this is the place. Right now is not the time, all the chair is doing is getting this on the agenda as an action item at a future-
Future topic.
And, and they will be noticed to come and participate in that process.
Well-
Because now it's jumping the gun again, and we're not gonna, I-
But, but a couple of weeks ago, we were jumping the gun because we didn't go through the planning board. So now we wanna present it, the report that these people have worked very hard at.
And we just said, that will come. The planning board has not had an opportunity to look at any of these documents, they just got them tonight. I don't think it's fair to, to, to present something to the planning board that they're not, they're not prepared to, to address.
And, and Larry, I'm just gonna step in also, i- it's not that we don't want, or nor are we going to be seeking for those comments, but I think we as planning board members need to do our due diligence of reviewing the documents first.
Oh, no, certainly, I mean, what about the documents that the environmental commission's already gathered up? Those are also documents that should be in our hands to look at.
Can they send, can they send them to Ryan to decimate?
I don't have a problem with them being sent, but to present tonight is not really fair, we have no idea what we're even looking at. This is the first time that we're receiving these back in the entirety, um, to include the tree ordinance, which is next, and I wanna give it, them the ample time.
It's the same discussion.
Yes.
It's the same discussion, we're prepared to present reports that these people have put together for the last six or eight months, to present it, and then we can discuss it as we want to as part of the-
Correct, and that's what I'm saying, and, and I agree with the, with the mayor at this point, is the reason it's not open for discussion is we'd like all the materials. So yes, having everything sent to Ryan, to our planning board, uh, secretary, he can take those, and then he can at that point disseminate them to us, so that we can have everything in its entirety. That is extremely, and then come back and up, we would hope you would come back so that we can discuss them with you.
Yes.
Okay?
Madam Chair, the other thing I would say is the public would want to take a look at that also. So once they are transmitted to the planning board, they'd be available for public review-
Once it's open for discussion.
So I'd be a little concerned about that as well.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I'm going to, I'm not going to repeat myself again, the same comment goes for the tree ordinance, this is not for, this is for a future planning board meeting, and we will, uh, notice accordingly. Any documents associated with that as well? Larry, please make sure that the environmental commission does forthcoming as well.
You're gonna have everything.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, AR-
That's what I wanted to talk about, I guess maybe there was misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's okay.
This is what we wanted, we wanted five minutes of time to just, a basic discussion, and then we're out. That's what we wanted, that was more than fair to ask for five minutes of time.
ARB approvals, we had nothing, it's been, I don't use the word in my world of queue or anything, so, but we have had none, so there is nothing for us to overall, overall review. I have no comments, uh, future con- or further comments on anything. Um, I would like to open up the pub, my, meeting, open to the public. Uh, anything that is not listed on the agenda, um, open it up to the public. Okay, come up to the microphone, please make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everybody, my name is Jeffrey Kaiser, twenty-three Vander Veer Avenue in Somerville, and I'm the vice president of the Somerville Environmental Commission. And if you don't know me, I have some details about me, I've lived in Somerville for six years, and I've been environmental commissioner for about five years now. I have a bachelor's in physics and engineering. And, uh, I was also a part of the flood zoning advisory committee, uh, that council member of room, uh, had issued. So, and I'm also just wanted to say, uh, since I didn't get to be here for the meeting before, uh, how excited we are and, and appreciate the opportunity to work on the, uh, master plan. So thank you very much, I just wanted to extend that to you. Um, I did come here just to make a public statement, uh, and to hand over, um, uh, some documents to you. Um, I came here to provide the environmental commission's recommendations that we've developed for the stormwater control ordinance-
Sir, I'm sorry that, that we have already closed that part, this public, uh, comment and question is anything not listed on the agenda. Those documents, we would like those documents provided to the secretary, but we're not, we're not allowing for comments or anything that, right now, it's not open for discussion.
I'm, I'm not looking for discussion. I was just about to just say what I'm bringing, that's all.
Okay, but we, we've already closed that item, it's on the agenda as a, a future discussion item, and it's not open for public comment right now.
Okay. So what would you, are you, can I just say what I brought, and that I can email to you if you want me to? Like, that's all I was gonna do.
Yeah, and I think-
I was just gonna bring what I had, and then that was it.
And I think that was-
I was not here to, I wasn't gonna discuss anything, I'm just here for making a public statement about what we did, and that we studied these, uh, these things for over a year, and that I was just gonna offer them all over.
And, and we do greatly appreciate it, and the board does wanna hear everything you have to say, they wanna read everything you have to say. I think you heard that, um, there was a request for that discussion to happen tonight, but the board would like to have the documents in hand.
Yeah.
They can get the documents, and also, the other issue is, there are members of the public that I'm quite sure are very interested in hearing what you have to say.
By looking at this agenda, they are not aware that this discussion was going to happen tonight, in fact, they were told that it was going to happen at another meeting.
So there's a specific reason for that, so no one is going to stop you from speaking at the next meeting where it is, we're looking very forward to having you come, and after they've taken a look at everything, you could say anything that you'd like.
Okay. All right, I think we're on the same, I'm, all right.
We, we are on the same-
We are on the same page.
I'm just a little confused, I can't make a public, anyway, um, we would like to request an opportunity to make a formal presentation of the material, and here is the material, I can send it to you in email.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any, just, so, just for formality on, uh, request, Ryan, anything that you needed to request or send can go through Ryan, so that we can make sure that it doesn't get missed, and you can get scheduled accordingly, so we would appreciate that, too.
I have a soft copy ready to go, I'll, I'll send it directly to him today.
Thank you so much. Any other members of the public? Okay, hearing none, a closed public session. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?